20-year, 4%.
I know what this is for.
I can tell you. It's just our taxes.
Our taxes?
Yeah.
Great.
All right, I will call our meetings order. Michelle, would you please your vote call?
Yes, Steve Heron.
Here.
Nicole Jacobs. Here. Aaron Luntcomb. Gina Brown. And you, Workmaster.
Here. Welcome to Alana.
Hi, thank you.
If I have a chance to meet her.
Hi.
I'm ready.
I bet you at the last meeting.
Nope.
Didn't I?
Nope.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought I did.
Sorry.
I thought I got you, but I remember you.
Okay, if you would please join the Pledge of Allegiance.
I think you are.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item number two approval of the agenda. We have one agenda change, and that is on item 10. That's a motion, not a resolution, right? Any changes any council members have? Otherwise, I would entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda from the speedway.
I'll second.
All right, we have a discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say aye. Carry. All right, public forum. Anything from the public here? Anyone talking now? You want to talk later, or you just want to...
Yeah, I'm on the agenda.
Yeah. Got your item 10, okay. All right, Michelle, city announcements.
Just to remind everybody, new rates are effective October 15th. So you'll see that reflected on your November bill. And also another reminder that junk, non-registered vehicles are not allowed to be parked on city streets or yards. Even if they are registered, they're not allowed to be parked in yards, front yards. We've seen symbols around town, so just a reminder for everybody about that.
All right. Thank you. Item number five, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. I'll move that. Second.
I'll second.
All right, all in favor.
Wait, wait, wait. Do we have a discussion?
Consent agenda.
Okay, I just wanted to go. Never mind. I just wanted to make sure it was right.
All right, all in favor of approving the consent agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say aye. Carry.
Nicole, did you second that?
I did.
Yes. Item number six, assignment of easement. I will open the public hearing regarding the easement to the county of... Did you receive any written or...
I did not.
Yes?
I did not.
Entertaining a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Thank you. Second. You have a second?
I'll second.
Public hearing is closed. All right. You have a resolution in your packet, staple in your packet. Fourth to last piece of paper on the front. I would entertain a motion to... To approve. I would entertain a resolution to approve the assignment of easement to Northwest Iowa Pollard Property.
I'll make a motion to approve the assignment of easement to Northwest Iowa Pollard Property. Okay, what else do you want me to read, Michelle?
You have to open your fourth to last page in your staple packet.
Public notice is hereby given that the City Council of the City of Polina, Iowa, will hold a public hearing on the 7th day of October, 2024.
Excuse me, Jeanette's the one announcing this meeting of this public hearing.
Okay, so...
What's approval also?
It's a direct decision. This one there? Yes.
This is the assignment. The resolution should be approved as an assignment.
This is all second for... It's a lot of it. It's a second.
All right, so the resolution would be approved.
I didn't see anything on you. This is all...
Yeah, this is the assignment. So the resolution basically would be resolved by the City Council of Polina, Iowa, to approve the assignment of easement to Northwest Iowa Pollard Cooperative Association.
It's all a loop.
We can do that. We have a second round.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion to second. Discussion questions on the assignment. Would you be unananced when you were able to vote? Michelle, roll call, please.
Steve Heron.
Aye.
Nicole Jacobs.
Aye.
Gina Brown.
Aye.
Danny Workmaster.
You guys say no, because you don't have paperwork.
Do we have to have the paperwork, or is it just the verbal...
So when you say we don't have... Well, this is... We don't have to say that. We don't have the resolution.
That's true.
That's true. We don't have that. So therefore, I'm going to... So what do we have to vote there? Three ayes, three noes? Resolution passes with three votes. All right.
Let's ask Tisha tomorrow if she wants to write a resolution for that as well.
Even stop, you have the verbal resolution, which I think is fine. All right, item number seven, Deputy Clerk.
Thank you.
You are everything else.
Yeah. Have you stand up and raise your right hand? Go ahead, Michelle. I, Alana H.B., do solidly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa, and that I will faithfully and impartially, to the best of my ability, discharge all duties of the office of Deputy Clerk in Polina as now or hearing after required by law. Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you very much.
7B is a resolution. I would entertain a resolution, approval resolution, to approve Alana as the authorized signer of the State Bank.
This is a resolution. It is resolved by the Council of the City of Polina, Iowa, to appoint Deputy Clerk Alana H.B. as an authorized signer at the banks for the City of Polina.
Motion to second. I'll second. Okay, any other discussion, questions? Hearing, so ready to vote? Roll call, please.
Danny Workmaster.
Aye.
Gina Brown.
Aye.
Nicole Jacobs.
Aye.
Steve Heron.
Aye.
So quick report on your first six days.
Alana.
First six days.
I was very back to it. I apologize. I'm loving it. I'm loving it. I love that I get to meet so many people because I don't know anybody. So it's been really, really interesting, and I love multitasking and a fast-paced environment, and that's exactly what it is.
Sounds good.
So I really like it. Thank you, guys. I really appreciate the opportunity.
Great. Kind of glad to have you.
Thank you so much.
Move on to agenda item number eight. Resolution for tax abatement on property at 430 South Main. We should have that on your desk. Take a quick look at that. I would entertain a motion to approve the resolution.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Polina, Iowa, that the Polina City Clerk inform the O'Brien County Treasurer of the decision of the Polina City Council to request the abatement of the taxes approved and accruing on the above-identified tax parcel consistent with Iowa Code Section 445.63, which I'm going to add, the location is 430 South Main Street in Polina, Iowa.
We have a second.
I'll second that.
Any discussion or questions? Can you personally announce that it gives the location of the property?
Yes. Yep. I understand. Let's keep that.
Yes, fine. Any questions or discussion? Really excited to hear, please. All right. Okay, any other questions or discussion? Hearing, I assume you're ready to vote? Roll call, please.
Danny Workmaster.
Aye.
Gina Brown.
Aye.
Nicole Jacobs.
Aye.
Steve Heron.
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, item number nine. Resolution for citywide trick-or-treating. Who's that over there for? For six days.
I make a motion to approve the city law, the trick-or-treating. Be it resolved by the City Council, or the Council of the City of Polina, Iowa, to allow citywide trick-or-treating on 10/31/24 from 6:00 p.m. until 8:00 p.m.
We have a second.
I'll second.
Any discussion or questions? I'd like to ask about this one. In the respect that why we do this is something that would give you a year. So for a native, we have a 10-year-old out there trick-or-treating at 8:05, then...
Yes. No handcuffs at all.
I guess, you know. Everybody understands what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Yep. I agree with that.
And to me, what regulates how late trick-or-treating goes is who's horse rider still on.
Yep. I just don't... The horse rider. Yep. Me too.
Yep.
And a lot of it, I mean, a lot of it goes back to the parents. And they're the ones that should, you know, talk to their kids and decide how late it should be out, and that sort of thing.
The only thing that helps is just to make sure that people know that the city is having recommended trick-or-treating on Halloween night versus a weekend night, as some cities do a little bit before. All right. Michelle, roll call, please.
Steve Heron.
Aye.
Nicole Jacobs.
Aye.
Gina Brown.
Danny Workmaster.
I got a seatbelt.
You are being difficult. With some gentleman coming down on you.
I'm going to need my light on extra late.
Watch for the teepee. Only in that trees.
I don't have any trees. They have to be there.
Maybe next year we should rethink.
Fair enough. Okay, we'll move on to item number 10, which is a request by our fire chief of the citywide burn ban.
I already have a request put into the county EMA for our fire district to put in a burn ban, and I appreciate if we follow suit in the city limits because anything with the county is incorporated, so that doesn't involve us. So, I mean, it's everywhere driving, not just other than the county. 10-day forecast, I think the biggest chance rate is like 5% on the day. So it's not looking very hopeful. Everybody's grass is dead, and I'm just... Yeah. One thing can lead to another very...
All the counties around the city. Yeah. There are different places. Yeah, northwest and south, just not us in the east yet.
Yeah. It's nothing that works after the other.
Sure. So something that technically the city would have to approve. You as a fire chief can...
I could do it all by myself. I'm just...
This is just...
Keeping the flow of information back and forth, so it's kind of a life. So I'm doing some of the same.
Yeah, since we do have the citywide burn ban, if someone does burn, then are we fined? Or is that kind of how that goes? I guess not really.
Which we can find them. I mean, typically county things, you don't straight off the bat find, but I mean, if they start a three-acre fire because of a... And that's kind of our judgment call. You don't have to find, but that is an option.
Dial codes and violation of prohibition issued under this section is a simple misdemeanor. So they're going to civil infraction. Or a simple misdemeanor, I guess that would actually be state. That would be law enforcement.
Yeah.
Exactly. Yeah, so it would be civil.
Because my ordinance is not written as such that I can write civil infractions for.
Okay, somebody's going to ask, are they allowed to do like a fire pit?
Yeah, but it has to be covered fire pit. Some can only wide openings. Some of your enclosed are inch-wide opening grade.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm not just a big file of...
Can we move to civil action?
Yeah.
For somebody that...
Yeah.
So I would entertain a motion to approve the citywide burn ban, to approve this.
I'll make a motion to approve the citywide burn ban until further notice. I'll second.
Any further discussion or questions from the council? Hearing, I assume you're ready to vote? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say aye. Carry.
I'll email it. Michelle, also.
Thanks, Ryan.
If you can, today there are 45 of 99 towns that have issued a full burn ban. Nobody's rescinded it. I was kind of surprised how statewide it was, not just... Not just parts. Southeast is the least, it seems like. All right, agenda item number 11 is there are city lots for sale, and we have two items there that we're working on. Very important, but the prior meetings is to consider approving a resolution on the type of covenants that the new ones to put on those lots that the city has there sold. Some places in the factory currently have a draft version of that.
Put your back there, just with covenants.
Last bit, go back. So they were, when we looked at covenants before, remember R1, R2, but that will be part of how they are sold, what they're sold, when they're sold. Some of the questions about those sort of covenants there. Some key thing, one, few ones were made, and these are the same items that were called out on industrial park lots as well as former residential lots as well. Time frame within two years, which is all available by the council. This means construction costs may not exceed $250,000, and of course comply with all grant city has on its focus.
There actually will be a reservation with this next meeting, because this is the first time you guys have seen this, the covenants.
Oh, okay. So this is... So we're on...
Yeah. This should be a resolution. Because I thought this would go along with what Tisha, but Tisha's said that Tisha business owners say that covenants aren't, do not follow the sale of the property to the development. That's what I did.
Right.
So if we transfer these to the city by challenge, said the covenants, would be still between the development.
So...
So it would be between the council and the development, the buyer.
Could be between council and the buyer.
Development.
Development and the buyer.
Yeah. So theoretically, we, the city probably covenants, we could act on these if we wanted to.
If they're agreed on, yeah.
Yeah, if they're agreed on. So we can approve these. So it's really two steps. What are we in the city going to put on top of, you know, covenants with those properties, regardless of if we finish the transfer of the property to the development group? They're going to be sold by the city or the development group to somebody, and what's that going to include? That would be these, as we talked about in our prior discussion. That would be one step. The other step is, we've had a meeting with the development group, and they are open to continued discussions with us to transfer properties to them, and then they will handle the sale process to people. Yep. This will be in place regardless. The second one, so whether we're looking for the council approval or not to continue investigating transferring to city properties, properties before the development group. Make sure that everybody's on board with doing that. So, back to 11A. These city property covenants. Since we have it as a resolution as an action item, we can have an opportunity to discuss this, but I would entertain a motion to approve a resolution to approve these city lot covenants. Anybody choose to do so.
Just got a long question on that. Do we have to make a motion first to have discussion, or can we discuss before?
Theoretically, we're supposed to put it on the table as an action item. Then it's a second, then we can discuss it, and then based on the discussion, we can either vote to approve it, deny it, or table it. And it comes up for discussion.
My, when I think that this was revised, the motion, that these two words are switched around, because we have a resolution for the transfer of city property. I think the motion should have been to approve this covenants, and the resolution was to approve, because that's what Tisha gave me, was the resolution to approve the transfer. That's what I'm going to do instead.
Yeah, probably tell me that we... This is...
She's got the notice of public hearing. Is it like for this year also? I kind of read it myself.
When we do this, we have to be with the agenda. You can't take more action than the agenda says, because we can take less action. So absolutely.
So how does the resolution play with the motion? Is there a hierarchy?
I don't think there's a hierarchy there. It's topical based, you know.
So those two just maybe switched around? Motion for the covenants, resolution for the transfer? That's what you're... Yeah, but we can't get a resolution. We don't get free... No. Yeah.
So we want a motion on the table. So we could pull up her lack of a motion. These items just wouldn't come up for discussion. We need to put them on the next meeting. So I'm looking for... These are important topics. But we can do less than these, so...
So we can make a motion to table?
We don't need to table. We can only table if there's a motion on the table, which there's not. There's not a motion second. So, would you like to discuss these items, please?
I have one part that I would like to discuss.
Yeah, what's that?
So on the covenants here, number one, the last part, the property will revert back to the seller, and the purchase price of the property will not be refunded to the buyer within the two years. But what if they're halfway finished with the house?
That's what I was...
Then, I mean, what happens? I mean, then it comes back to us, and it would be more, do we make allowances, or what can we do with that?
That's maybe because of all success, they wish that first.
No, with nothing. Like, we wouldn't sell it then.
That, I guess that would be a legal question, that we can get legal advice on the other hand. This worries how our past development lots have been sold, both commercial and residential. I understand what you're saying.
Has it been zoning covenants that way? Been the zoning that way?
These kind of covenants are not in our zone. It just becomes a condition of the sale property.
So back to the chain.
Absolutely. This can be whatever we want it to be with those properties.
So are these covenants written down anywhere? They were just going to, like, which lot are you pressing? I just didn't know about that part. You know, that... I agree with Nicole.
I agree with Nicole.
So maybe that would be a question for Tisha, that, that, just some clarification on that?
Yeah.
I could open up the, if it, you know, worms. But if she says that that's fine, then, I think like two years is.
If their, if their two years is about to expire, two weeks within completion of project, then what do you do? You follow this word for word or?
Realistically, what happens if you follow it word for word? The, the owner of the property would have to come to us and ask for an exception.
Yeah.
And then we'd probably say, you know, we would say no, we're going to follow it to law, or realistically, asking an exception, but with a limited exception.
There, there must have been a reason at one time that I would put in there, because my immediate reaction would be if construction is not started within the two years, then the property will revert back to.
The problem is if somebody has a bill on it, if they want to buy a lot, sit on it, what would start a construction, being a foundation, form, putting, or, yep.
Right.
So, so I'd have any definition as well.
Right.
Yeah. Can follow up on the legal on that?
And I think as far as, like, the completion of that within two years, just the outside, because a lot of times the inside is not, I mean, is that, is that, is that completion of the whole entire thing? Some people don't do the basements right away, some people, I don't know. I, I.
I would think from a practical standpoint, though, completion would be, and the city doesn't, you know, I mean, the city planning doesn't do this, but some cities do this from, from a building permit standpoint, a certificate of, a certificate of occupancy, that would be completed. That, that would, that would include finishing of the basement, but it would include finished rooms, bedrooms, kitchen, and bathroom, you know.
Okay.
But, we think, you know, if the council would choose to, we can add that, those kind of details in there, or check with Tisha, again, how she would recommend that we define completion.
And some of those details will be defined on the, in the, some of those details will be defined on the building permit also, um, to a sale.
So if I come out of a workshop, this is the worry that we, we had for, for those two items, but if we want to add more into our consideration, we could still continue it.
Well, I, I think we should, you know, just maybe just the outer shell up, be completed on the outside because somebody might want to look there and do the inside work themselves.
More than they have to live in.
Keep in mind that the reason that city would want to have this covered in there at all is because they're trying to develop housing, tax base, et cetera. So, if, if you're going to say the only, only part of it hadn't been completed in two years, then we could say within three years, or we could say one year, we can say whatever we want. And then they can accept it by property or not. Okay, so that we can finalize these as much as possible before we consider them at the next meeting. What other types of details are you willing to hear? So it sounds like most of it is wrong, but it's completion.
I, I think the first thing that I had initially asked about, I think if it's half done, um, then I can't find it yet, then what happens? And, I mean, if, we would like for them to come in and ask for an exception, but if they don't, in two years, and I know when their, their two years is up, that's usually, they should know that, but if not, if they just don't care, then, yeah, I suppose they could probably take some sort of action on that, but I think just some clarification on that.
Of course, clarification on completion.
And, yeah, what?
Okay. Construction cost, dollar amount, is that a acceptable dollar amount to the council?
Yes. I think that's actually very low. For what, new, or new dollars?
Maybe it could be quite higher. I assume you don't hate that.
Okay.
Well, my thought is that, that states change for money division anyway. Of course, costs is considered, what the, if your house should be built, you know, five-thousand. You know, if you kind of, if you're going to like, and so on, maybe, if like water you didn't, and you got to be right here, you got to be, and don't admire your customers.
I believe council could say we're along the way to, to adjustments as a meeting. All right, so let's discuss the, you know, transfer to.
I've got one thing I remembered either, if we need to, just to go to clarification, or it must be on the city code ordinances, and so many more ordinances. That's how it's on our webpage, city code ordinances and then, so many ordinances. So it's all on the city level, carefully, whatever they do. And on the number one there, I think the biggest issue is just, you know, I'm a bit not necessarily optimistic, they have additional approvals on the line, or anything that, we have to address that as well, for future, what we got to do with those approvals.
Let me, provide a couple of specific examples, let us make sure we're all on the same page.
Well, example, perhaps a cash or detached garage possibly on the property, which they can have as long as they build a house.
They can't have it until they build a house.
Longer than construction, all right? Maybe they go to their garage.
Yeah, they couldn't build the garage first.
Right. So that would be additional improvement that we, maybe landscaping, you know, they can be numbered with approvals.
That'd be a covenant, or would that just be part of the building permit, though? I don't know.
I would say we want to get covenants, so they prefer to get their building permit.
So the covenants are not just for new structures? It's for existing too?
There wouldn't be, there are no existing structures on any of these properties.
Yeah, but what he's saying is they were adding a garage, right, if they were doing an addition, covenants won't go out, it would just be the building permit.
No, if those would have to be, if they're going to build them, then that would have to be part of their building permit.
And I'm going to create some conditions on the number three there.
So related to eleven D. The main, if the council's ready, the main purpose of B is we get a, this is a, a resolution, so, one thing is in the show, I just can't be approved, is because we wouldn't, we, we need to have discussions with the development group first. Item B here is to get the, the approval of the city council, support of the city council to continue discussions and negotiations with the development group on the details of how the properties would be transferred and how they would handle those on, under the head of the city.
Wouldn't Tisha have known what we needed to do before she said this to us? That's why she wanted to get the public hearing on it first? And she sent us just after the, I mean, she sent this to us today after, when she was at that meeting.
Like, the development, they, they motioned, yeah, to work with us, so.
They motioned to work with us.
I thought it was more a motion than that they were hoping to transfer the, the properties that we would have for our law. And that's why she did, that she did here with that knowledge.
Regardless of this, you know, so this will take a resolution, we don't have a resolution on it for Jatta, so can't do that right.
You want to think otherwise, we did, that's, that's right.
So, key thing out here is, just so that we can keep moving forward, if you could look through here, are there any issues or recommendations that the council has to include in this, and any revisions to this resolution to then set a public hearing, to meet with the development group to then set a public hearing? It just lists the properties. It doesn't have the city selling them to the development group because the development group, of course, on behalf of the city, got the direction of the city on this. If you can look at it in more detail, I mean, I'm just get, um, any of the input questions that you may have, as soon as possible back to Michelle and your, those with city council. Another question?
Right, is a consequence question, but I see the conveyance is right, quick, like, I think I know why it's doing that, but with the quick lane, you can only give somebody what you have, so it's not like, I'm right to the title, that's short of that. And I'm just wondering, again, it's a consequence question, if that's going to let us into trouble about the whole thing, we can both try to tell them, because you can't, you don't have a warrant, you can't, maybe you can't have a warrant. But I can answer that question.
What about that question?
Uh, if you want to, you want to scroll through a bunch of words from the last one.
Yeah, definitely, as, you know, city attorney knows, what we're trying to accomplish here is that, that means, so, I presume that's a valid, a little bit.
Was there a question? If you understand my concern, it's a liability, you know, be able to, if you admire a warrant, you, you have a quick lane, you have your title. And yet, you can only give what you got.
Yep. Okay. Any other questions? Let's check on them. There we go. Again, get back to Michelle to look at it and talk to anything else, and. So, ready to move on or not? Item twelve. Entertain a motion, uh, motion to approve a resolution for a raise for French for gold.
Do you want discussion before or after?
After.
Okay.
On with the resolution, if you're raised for French for gold, give a twenty-three dollars per hour if you have a recall by the council of the city of Rhode Island, give three, one dollar per hour raise for French review, give a dollar rebate, uh, twenty-three dollars at the city of Rhode Island.
Okay, so a motion, a second.
I'll second.
All right, discussion.
I just wanted to convey that we had a six-month review last week, and he stayed busy, he's a great worker, he seems very enthusiastic about his job, they have a whiteboard at the city office, and he's pretty good as well. Looking at that, Kelly is real happy, wet down, and he seems to take the bow by the horns, something needs to be done, but, do you have anything to add, Kelly?
End of discussion, for questions, here you, Michelle Rofel.
Assistant Karen.
Aye.
Nicole Jacobs.
Aye.
Gina Naram.
Aye.
Danny Workmyster.
Aye.
Okay, item thirteen, Williams' company update, Michelle.
I don't have much of an update, I reached out to them to see if they would send an occasion letter for the next exam, and I didn't get anything back. They were here the week before, the Friday before last, Justin worked with Alex, um, trying to figure out the cash report. It's, it's going to be hard to figure out, um, I can go back as far as 2018 and the cash report was good off. So, I, I, he's, he gave us some suggestions and we'll keep plugging away on it, but.
On that cash report, the bank says we have more than.
Right.
Our, yeah, okay. What I was trying to.
And nothing new from software companies?
No. Software.
The software companies.
Oh. And they could go in and make adjustments, but that's not what we want.
So where's the update 2018, is what you're saying?
I mean, it's, it's been, it's been off, like, I went to, you know, and maybe, I might get her back from Justin, because when I emailed him, I explained to him, you know, I went back to, in the fiscal year 2018, and it wasn't a zero. I went to fiscal, end of fiscal year 2019, and it wasn't a zero. So it could have been somebody entering transactions into the previous year that had already been closed, and they shouldn't have been. It's just a matter of finding out what happened and when, and it was, it's never the same amount, you know, at the end of fiscal year 2019, it was a certain amount, but then it wasn't the same amount at the end of 2020. You know, it's just, they, they're all different amounts, so it's kind of hard to figure out exactly what happened. And, I mean, to me, I'm still fairly new, you know, working something that I've, I've never done before, and understanding the software without any training is a lot, and to try to dig as deep as it needs to be, you know, dug into it, it's kind of tricky.
As you say, if, if they went back, somebody back in, put something.
Right.
Year that was closed, how it brought her came out.
Yeah.
I'm going to.
Right. And, and the more familiar Alana gets with her job, then the whole sticker on tougher ones like this, and we weren't even figured out.
That's fine, good deal.
Okay, move on to item number fourteen, discuss CP's cell phone for sprinting Kelly's out.
Yeah, I put this on here because Kelly's been using his personal phone for all these years. So when Kelly's on vacation, when Kelly's off work, he's getting phone calls on his personal cell phone. And I think it's something we need to consider giving him the, a work phone.
And if he were to happen to go on vacation, he can leave his work phone here for somebody else to resolve.
Right. Yep, next person in charge, right.
That's good.
Your work phone worked, it works for a while for the chief, correct?
I don't think we have done any of that. It's been long ago.
Oh, you should.
Lots of support, I want you to check in there, get the details and stuff, and then we can get approval action later next time.
Okay. Okay.
And is that what the difference? So the first night, you said we'd go through and a lot of other cell phones, right?
That's certainly the thing.
And you don't have any issues?
Definitely cleared up some legality issues also.
Yeah.
If something gets called and reported to the personal phone, and he doesn't catch it right away, but, you know, Paul Fitz is the right lawyer and the right person. Unfortunately, that fix happens. Great, item number 15.
Go ahead. We've bored two and a half years of cement, filling in patches, and it's three patches by the spill we fixed, and then there's one over by Casey's diesel pumps we fixed. Think we got Dallas happy. We have been doing some sweeping lately. We have been working on Creed Street, taking out holes. Road is started today. Great meeting for the start of Monday.
A pair of hands was good, huh?
So, yeah. She decided and ready to work, so...
Did you ever take a look from Downs there, going east, kind of by the, the gas plant there? Is it a manhole that's kind of coming up a little bit?
It's all fixed.
Oh, it is, okay.
We fixed that road, too. We put some gravel and rock down.
So, sweeping, how much longer do you think that is gonna be, go up and sweep it, especially Main Street Broadway?
He's gonna have to come in early to do that, but I can have to do that seasonally. He has been doing streets around now.
I've seen a lot. It'd be nice to get to downtown area, so as soon as possible. So is this a scale over deal, or is it...
Both. I think it's both. And we did get all the Johnsons, you prettyed up some?
It might have been.
We probably put some grassy down here sometime soon.
Yeah, it really makes that property a difference, but I wouldn't rather. Michelle?
Get started on BGR, but there's the budget Gary Chas has, you guys can just look through those, there's, I mean, there's no rush on it. The first two are new generators, and the second one is the used one he was talking about. I believe that price includes the installation also. That's why it's twice as much as what I said. I mean, this would be a revenue bond, and at the end of it all, if we did option three, no matter what, we'd be making money. We did the 4%, it'd be 120 years, it'd be 146%. That MRAAS will be paying us back, if you look at the back page. MRAAS basically be doing this, I don't have money to pay our bond back, but there's, yeah, there's more info on these sheets, but...
So there's, go ahead. The 4% would be if we can get that all the way, right? So, conservatively, if we could buy, if we could get that rate, we could get back, or what you're saying, what this is saying, until I think there was like, what, 20-year bond at 5% revenue, you have to pay back, or return us 139% or else cost. So number three is used to make revenue.
Number three is used, and the other ones are new ones.
One and two are new. How many hours does that generator have?
The one he was talking about, he said $300 on it. They broke in. Right, yeah.
So I wonder why they would get rid of it if they have that many hours on it?
I think some hospitals have to update their stuff every so often, type of thing.
Maybe.
Or maybe they grew and needed a bigger capacity generator.
Typically, they change them out before they have costing to pay. That's, they figure out that how many years they have to have it to pay that, and then do the repair and maintenance projection against all that. Which would lead you to an assumption that we should put in something for the cost of repairs.
There's that's in here.
But I mean, that's typically why, if someone, I mean, they, like the jail, for instance, that it's mandated that we have a generator backup, so that's why playing for, it only staying for so long. But I mean, $300, they could play around a half an hour to an hour on the monthly checks. So did you find out why you just $100, why they didn't place it? That's a good question. Could nicely in the age of so long, but I find it was, maybe nicely.
If we did this, it'd be a revenue bond, so it all, no matter what, we could, would be self-sufficient technically, meaning it would not affect anybody else.
Yeah, if you could get additional, the history of it, if you get a detailed cost breakdown.
And does it go through, like, testing before? I guess I don't, I don't know.
Before the buyer?
Yeah, but to make sure.
That's true, there's some inspection.
All right, now, Michelle.
Okay, I did have to make five phone calls this morning, of people that had trash outs that didn't pay for their flight, and then people had stuff out that didn't pay, like, they paid for the $20, but said they had no appliances, and they did. So, and I know there was some stuff out that we're trying not to pick up, and kind of deck. So, yeah.
Even though she really said not to pick them up. Always a good match, isn't it?
Stuff every Sunday, there was a lot, but there was one that really had a lot of finger.
How many teams can be there with a spring?
It was, it was less, it was usually, it was less in the fall. We were probably, I think we were done picking everything up, aside from going back and picking up TVs and tires and stuff like that, we, I think we were done at 1:00. So, we're all done.
So the 120 was, if everybody had their stuff disposed of, because we didn't, we didn't water in the basement, so they go there.
Well, I know when we had the flood, I think we filled that dumpster four or five times, so I mean, that probably had something to do with the tubing.
And I don't even have anything, we have mortgage here.
I really don't have anything else. Any questions for me? Michelle?
Yes.
What category did the real estate tax allow, or is it a number of?
That is why it is an additional thing.
Yeah.
Last year, I didn't say, as it was done the year prior, and I just wanted to do some double checking, make sure that was correct, so they haven't been entered into any category that's a gap. It was paid.
Yeah. So they're the, they're the items, or is it a number of categories?
I can let you know when I make sure it's correct.
That'd be great, thank you. Oh, one thing, I might have updated at our workshop, but there is one party that wants to come over and take a look at the clinic building, Mercy Clinic building, now that they're closed. So you gotta hold your weekend, and your team, so I can, I can say it's here, so, he doesn't want, knowing who he is and what he's doing, but it's a legitimate business. Yeah, so that's good to see some interest in that. Haven't heard back from the other two that were looking for a part-time space, like they have two currently, um, I'm talking, they're all, one of, I mentioned, one is mental health, one's pain management, another one is medically related as well, so I mentioned each one of them, that maybe they could all three get together and, you know, share space, shared administration, or receptionists, or things like that as well, so, just looking at options. So is the building a 2D?
I haven't been notified, but it is.
Yeah, the last day was a week ago today. Reporting day start after it's cleared out, after they let us know it's cleared. So, hopefully, I heard that Cherokee opened up, it sounds like they maybe bought the clinic in Southern.
The building is still the Johnsons?
Oh, is it?
Yeah, they didn't sell the property, but Cherokee Regional Medical Center is off.
They did, they were there, the Sheldon radio station, they sounded like they bought the Southern clinic, but it's still a different. Just reading. Ready to listen?
I am, it's Mercy, I'm sure. I, you know, talked with Jim Colleen earlier today.
Is she in the Southern clinic for Mercy? Is that who you're talking about? Yeah, she was at our... Okay, so she's gonna be with Cherokee now, now the picture? I think she might be working for both.
Well, she's just now Cherokee, she's, she's the Southern.
She, she got hired by Cherokee originally, she worked at Southern.
But the clinic is open in permanent.
Is what? Oh, and I don't know, I don't know if she's paid or...
You can work in two spots, there's several people. All right, council comments, any council comments? Steve?
Would possibly look at getting some better speakers, or more speakers. I've heard from a few people that watch it, like tonight, and some of the comments are very hard to hear.
You can hear the page turning way better than you guys can.
Really?
Yes. So, if we, I, I've done several times, rewatched, I mean, in case I missed something, I mean, it's very hard to hear these guys, but as yours are, and I mean, that's not your guys' fault, but I mean, those are your footprints or the pages, that's all you care, it's like, I understand.
There's some...
There you go.
Do you, do you want to check?
I can, yeah.
One, I was calling up, it's not really, is there any way possible that we could get more of our hand up in our packages? I know some things are insensitive, but there isn't a lot of things that we can do that are insensitive, because it's difficult to come here and just do this small paper.
How we feel about is we have to be, everything that needs to be on the agenda in the agenda out by Tuesday or Wednesday. Because I didn't get any of the stuff for Tuesday, but some things were thrown out late, late in the week. So like, Southern, they have their agenda and their package and everything ready a week prior.
Week, week in and out, yeah. Well, if there's anything that can be done in every card, I, I know first time, I agree with you, you're sure. So, would claims be workable that way?
Claims would be, unless we do, we're trying to think, we got idea if we did claims once in a...
Did we also talk about maybe going with hot pads?
Yeah.
For the city council members?
Oh, did you? Was that, that must have been last year.
I think we just talked about it.
Oh, or you just talked about it. As a council, I hear they talked about it.
No, all these papers, except this simple little resolution for Trent, I didn't get Tuesday. So I couldn't get it to you earlier. We didn't meet with the, the development group till Thursday.
So one of the things we could do is, meeting with the development group on Thursday, we're, we're in the habit of doing things like late, so that we really should wait until next meeting, and that would get that stuff lots of the rest of the month, so we're willing to wait some.
Now, with some urgency, fine, you can have an extra some of the paper.
And, you know, Trent's review wasn't until Friday afternoon. So that's why you get your papers.
That would, again, would understand some of this, and have every, every meeting, we have as much information. You know, it's, I read a lot of different things, resolutions on every store. I just agree with you, I think you're right.
You can look that up thoroughly.
And it's, you know, it's actually very, very stressful on us in here, trying to push all this stuff through very quickly without making mistakes, and it'd be a lot nicer if we could have a deadline and stuff to it.
I'm sure you would also like to have the questions, not so much here at the meeting, but maybe like, I'm just saying, for instance, if Denny had a question, he would come to you personally, not here at the meeting, to take that time.
We just go fast, do we have the stuff a week ahead of time, or a half week ahead of time, he would have the opportunity to do that, so we're all work.
And maybe we should just say, you need to have something by, let's just use Wednesday night, so you can complete it on Thursday, and whatever isn't, and the next, I guess the...
From my point of view, and for the public, the discussions of meeting are the whole point, having a public meeting, so having Danny ask questions of Michelle outside for the public.
Sometimes it's pretty simple, though, that it's, it's a pretty simple question, and I think it just gets to be too much, or just a simple question, a simple answer. I understand the whole public meeting, but sometimes you might have 10 questions, and sometimes I, I run into Michelle and ask her a click, get my, get my answer, and then go about my way. And I, I choose to not so much some of those, some of those important ones, yes, I will bring them up if I feel like the public wants to know, but some of those are just too simple.
So, why don't you come up with a recommendation of cutoff day? You know, Wednesdays may be good, that only moves it up kind of a day, you know, from what we currently have, maybe that would be helpful, maybe we could move it up a little bit more than that. The week before, you know, like Monday, last, last week, Monday, for this meeting, we'd do the cutoff, and that way she's got a day or two to work with it, we get it out for sure by Wednesday, then you can come up with that recommendation. And this, yeah, that we can have a thing almost important that needs to be brought forward, and what can be put on the back burner, and waited, and a total cabinet, it's a very good review, so, and that immediately probably solves the problem.
Yeah, and stuff like... Yeah, and stuff like, well, like, you know, Brian, when he made this on agenda, stuff like that's kind of understandable, that's not an emergency and...
I agree.
Okay. Any other council comments, questions, recommendations? Any committee reports? Okay. Bert, Ryan. Why don't you go first, Bert?
Next Monday night, we will be holding our first open house down at the finance station. Let me give tours, show everybody the space that we are currently occupying and we'll be doing public presentations on what we're hoping to grow.
Can we have people back in Kirk Center though?
Oh, thank you.
I need doors and gears.
Danny, are you volunteering yourself to do it?
It's tough. I don't know.
Yeah, what are all the side routes?
So that's Monday, the 14th.
Yeah, from six thirty and then, and we are also doing the live expectation demonstration hopefully. So there's a lot of people that have never seen that, but who...
Is that at six thirty or is it gonna be at seven?
No, we're gonna start that seven, a little after seven.
Okay, thanks. Dave? Anything, anything new on our part-time officer?
Yeah, I wanted to know.
Well, we're waiting on you guys to set what we're offered for wage and then she mentioned something about having to advertise it.
We're in to advertise it. For part-time guys? Any, any specific...
I'm messaging out with any detail.
Do you think we should just go with that Brent copies? What he suggested, like the thirty, thirty-five and then thirty dollars?
Well, yeah, I mean, yeah, I think he said, I didn't say he has one, you know, relatively rookie guy that I think picks it up twenty-nine and the rest of the thirty, and his was thirty-five because he was working, so that one will be up here.
And then offer them the acres that I'm talking about.
Now, are you guys still interested in potentially hiring a full-time officer if one? Full-time?
I would, I would say so.
So I did, I did give an application.
I know you said that.
Yeah, at first I thought it was, um, not, I thought that was a standing email, but I did think it was real.
So I won't confess that on the...
Okay, I'll stop in tomorrow. Okay. He works for Union County in South Dakota as a correctional officer.
I'll stop in tomorrow, okay, I don't have to tell these other...
So I think, why is he relocating?
He needs to, I told him he needs to. He's, he's relocating to Orange City and he ended up calling here and asking and he said he was relocating to Orange City and I told him he would have to live in Colleen and he said he understood that.
Did he say where he was moving to State Farm?
Okay. Go back and look at any past police department items that we could be, if it would be also posted. Okay. Nobody here commanding at fiber airport? If you, if anyone is interested, make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, so we do have a police officer position posted. It's been...
It's just not the part-time guys. Do we have to?
I don't know. I, I can check into that. I'm not a hundred percent sure we're gonna have to. Because we have...
The only thing I've seen about a requirement for posting is because of veteran preference things, you have to have, you have to have so much notice to the closure date of the thing. Although I don't know necessarily after we post because it's part-time.
So if a police officer position posted, what do we have to do to start?
Go group the wages and stuff like that.
So we'll put those items on the next... Okay. Any interest in motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
On favor, say aye.
Aye.
favor say aye. Here, you are adjourned.